Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Brittany to call the role, please.
Councilmember Gellerlofs?
Present.
Marygud?
Present.
Norhug?
Here.
Steenstra?
Here.
Trust is absent. Vanderwan?
Here.
And Mayor Max?
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we don't have a local pastor with us, but we do have Councilmember Tim Steenstra who will be giving the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to call that with a pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me if you'd like. Almighty God, we thank you for this community and for the people who work in it and the people who live in it and all the people who make it a very special place. We thank you for the departments and for the first responders and for the services provided. We thank you for the governance and we just ask for your continued blessings as we strive to be all that we can be. We thank you tonight for the First Responders Children's Foundation and the great work that they do and we thank you for others who are here tonight, who work and serve to make this a great community. We ask a blessing at our meeting. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. I know you appreciated that one-minute notice that I gave you. Thank you. Thank you. Before I forget, Councilmember Trust has gone tonight and he's asked to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse him tonight?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Also, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Or motion support? And any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. And we also have the minutes from our last meeting, July 24th, three weeks ago already. If you had a chance to look at those, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support and support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out in those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our last meeting, July 24th, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay, then we've got bills and this time of year, we always, the bills are typically split into two parts, the old fiscal year, which totals about $245,000, and the new fiscal year is about $1,930,000. So let's talk about the old fiscal year bills first. Dennis, anything you want to point out on those bills? Jane, anything you'd like to?
No, we have one more. What's older, new?
Okay. Substantial amounts tonight, that means lots happening in the city, right? A lot of construction and good things happening. Councilmembers, any questions about the last year or the old fiscal year bills in the amount of about $245,000? For Dennis, Department Heads, anybody else? No, is there a motion to approve the bills from the old fiscal year in the amount of
So moved.
Or motion support? Any other discussion or questions? Brittany, would you call the role on that, please?
Councilmember Marygud?
Yes.
Norhug?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Vanderwan?
Yes.
Gellerlofs?
Yes.
And Mayor Max?
Yes.
Now, for the new fiscal year, the bills total $1,930,186.20. And you'll see in there, one of the larger items was the wire transfer and that was for fire equipment, fire truck, right?
I bought it.
Yeah, great. Okay, are there any? Dennis, anything you want to talk about, new fiscal year? Jane?
Nope, I just wanted to, what you've already done, point out the payment for the fire truck. Been collecting money for about eight months, that's how it's trying to pay it out. So just wanted to remind you all that you did approve funding of that vehicle through an installment purchase agreement, just a little over half a million dollars. That first payment will start about a year from now, so.
Great, thanks. Councilmembers, any questions on the new fiscal year bills? No, is there a motion to approve bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
Support. Any final questions? Brittany, would you call the role, please?
Norhug?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Vanderwan?
Yes.
Gellerlofs?
Yes.
Marygud?
Yes.
And Mayor Max?
Yes. Now, before we open up to public comment, we've got a couple of fun things. The first one is the Police Department's civilian commendation. So Chief and Deputy Chief, these are great events, things that we always look forward to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank, we're here to recognize First Responders Children's Foundation and their two local reps, Mr. Bob Stansberry, if you've joined me, and Mr. Nick Stansberry. Under recommendation of the Granville Police Department Board of Awards, First Responders Children's Foundation, Mr. Bob Stansberry and Mr. Nick Stansberry have been selected to receive formal recognition. First Responders Children's Foundation has been supporting the Granville Police Department's community engagement efforts since 2021. They have supplied all the sporting goods, backpacks, and toys that we've given away at all of our events. The value of these donations is in the thousands of dollars. The sporting goods and backpacks were direct benefit to our citizens as a, were given out in events that were held in our police in parks program, badges and boo. We utilize a lot of this stuff to help support our Faith and Blue food drive. So we've really had an impact, or they have had an impact with our residents. Another function that we've been able to participate in, thanks to their generosity, is Toy Express. Toy Express is a program that is coordinated nationwide by First Responders Children's Foundation and coordinated here in Kent County with the Granville Police Department, Granville Fire Department, that allows all public safety, police, fire, and AMS to give back to the community by providing hundreds of gifts to the patients of Helen DeVos Children's Hospital in the month of December. These gifts are delivered by a caravan of emergency vehicles. This presents public safety, and we all know that our reputation has taken a couple of hits in the past couple of years, but it gives all of us a time to shine in the public eye. And more importantly, or equally as important, it helps the mental well-being of the first responders that are able to take part in those type of events. First Responders Children's Foundation is based out in New York City and was formed after the tragic 9/11 attacks to support the families of the fallen responders. It has since grown in scope and mission to support all first responders and their families. Locally, the foundation operates with a warehouse out of South Haven, Michigan, and our local representatives are Mr. Bob Stansberry, the Senior Director of Strategic Relations and National Public Safety Liaison, and Mr. Nick Stansberry, who is the program manager and runs the facility out of South Haven. Both Bob and Nick have gone out of their way after hours at any time to take a text saying, hey, we need some more stuff because we found another family. And without their efforts, we would not be able to support our community engagement mission in the way we have. So based on their recommendation and approval of the boards, we are going to present each of them and the foundation with a civilian commendation. Bob?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I'd like to get a photograph with, to you and the mayor, if you don't mind. Thank you very much.
I see you've got a couple guests. Do you want to interview them?
The farmer's seat. This is my mom and my stepdad. This is Jenny, and then Iris, my girlfriend. Very nice.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So I've just got a question. So how'd you get involved with this organization? It's a great thing.
Well, it was years ago, but I was actually, quite a while ago, I was Chief of Police in Houston, Georgia. Then I moved, now I run Strategic, I run National Security and Public Safety for Cisco Systems. And I do a lot of work in New York City and they invited me to join the board in like 2009. And since then, we've just grown. Just after the attacks of 9/11, there were 800 kids that lost a first responder parent. And our organization actually stood up and started awarding those first scholarships to line duty desks. So we were really primary line duty desks throughout the last probably 17 years. And now we've grown into program managing around agencies across the country around community engagement. I do have to tell you something. From Granville's perspective, I do 400 of these roughly, Toy Expresses, a lot of other events throughout the country. Granville is the one I keep going back to give examples to other agencies across the country of your Parks and Police program and what you have, Police and Parks. And they type that and adapt it to their agencies. So what the Chief and Deputy Chief have done here, other agencies across the country are actually mimicking because of the work he has, he started. So I'll be very proud of that.
We appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for all that you do. So thanks for being here tonight. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting just because you're, you're welcome to do it, but. Thank you very much. Time for public comment. I'm sorry, we have one more presentation from Josh from Kent District Library. Again, another.
I'll jump up.
Okay, great, welcome.
I knew you wanted to skip over me and everybody's leaving because of. Another day in my life.
Glad you're here too.
Just kidding. So again, I'm Pete Dykes, I'm your board rep for representative to the KDL Library. And you know, usually we come up here and thank you for the partnership and everything and that goes without saying. And I'm sure Josh and Randy will talk further about it. But I wanted to tell just a quick little story. So I actually took the first real vacation that I've taken like multi-day, probably since, oh, 2004, where it wasn't like two, three days around. So took my youngest and we went on a road trip. His, he was going to go to Italy with the seniors at Granville, but too many people dropped out, so the trip was delayed or canceled. So I told him, all right, we'll just go and, where do you want to go? Another country? I'm like, well, Canada. It won't break the bank. So we went through Detroit, you know, Ann Arbor, and up to Toledo and down to Niagara Falls. And when we were in Niagara Falls, I was pretty sunburnt, you know, bald headed and you know, I was wearing outdoor stuff and I'm usually kind of a hermit in the basement. But having a good time, it was almost the last full day that we were there, parked in a lot with, you know, like 50 spots and we were the only ones there when we parked there and we were heading off to the power plant, right? You know, big tunnel underneath, get there before the crowds. I get back and there's this huge lot, my little car, and there's a van right next to it. And I'm like, really? You know, and there was this young family that was in there and they were like trying to get their kids out. And so we were just sitting there waiting politely, waiting. And they came out, you know, with the young kids and, oh, we parked next to you because you're from Michigan. I'm like, oh, okay, where are you from? Standell. And they asked where I was from. I said Granville. And they looked at my shirt, I happened to be wearing my KDL Summer Wonder shirt, you know, I don't have that many shirts that aren't logoized. So you know, that one was nice and fresh still, only a couple of months old, so been through the wash maybe twice. Worn on, she looked at the shirt and she goes, KDL Kent District Library. I'm like, yeah. And she goes, that's the library, you know, she's from Standell, that's the library the kids, and I always go to. We go to all the programs and we really enjoy it. And then we go from the programs, we go and walk down to the, to the farmer's market and we just make a day of it in Granville at least once a week. I'm like, wow, that's really cool. And it was, I mean, what are the chances, right? Niagara, Ontario, Canada. And not only wasn't it a Granville person, it was just a Kent County person, right? But they love Granville, they love the library, whole thing. So just thought I'd share it, you know, happy people with, happy with the city, happy with the services you offer. And it's a community, not only for those that live here, but those that come and spend time here. So with that, Josh? All right, I'm supposed to introduce Randy. Both of us want to introduce Josh, I guess.
Randy, go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Randy Goble. I'm the Director of Engagement with Kent District Library. I oversee the in-person programs, marketing, and community engagement, which includes our system-wide outreach and our bookmobile. One of our strategies, probably our key strategy to what we do in engagement is really understanding the needs and the interests of each community. Some people look at KDL and think, well, it's a mega library. Well, it's not really a mega library, it's a library with, has 20 different communities, 20 community libraries is what we really are, 21-county in Grant Township now. But you know, and it's really working well. Last year, we signed on over 20,000 new library cardholders. And this year, we're starting a new card drive next month. It's called Get Carded. So if you don't, if you know anybody who doesn't have a library card, it's a great time to get them signed up. But another thing I'm working on this year is our Literary Libations Gala. Once a year, we do a gala fundraiser that usually focuses on some specific effort. This year, our focus is on the Talking Book and Braille Center. And you know, with the expansion in the Granville branch, there's some adaptive technology in one of the rooms there that we're lucky to have. And it's also happens to be the 50th anniversary of the Talking Book and Braille Center at Kent District Library. And they have a needs list, they have a wish list of some things that they need that the regular funding doesn't provide. So the gala is going to help support that. That's taking place next month, if you're interested. Kdl.org/gala, we'd love to see you there. One of the other things I wanted to mention is engagement. It's great to have a lot of library card signers come on board, but what really matters is when they're really utilizing it. And this is an area where Kent District Library really stands above our peer libraries. We have access to a lot of the data on how engaged people are with signing up and using new cards and we're head and shoulders above the rest. And that's due, really due to the people in each of the branches and how they, again, serve the interests and the needs of the community. And with that, I'd like to say thank you for your support of the library and turn it over to Josh for some more examples.
Thank you. My turn. Josh, with everybody wanting me up here, I feel like I need to be way more exciting than I find it. But yeah, it's always good to see all of you. I know many of you I see on a regular basis in the library or advisory board or whatever. But I always like to start with just a thanks. Every time I'm here, I'm just aware of how lucky I am of our 20 branches. I don't think that any of our managers have as great of a relationship, at least in my mind, with the city or community as, as we do here. And I just really appreciate the support. As Mr. Stansberry, I believe, mentioned, like we just have great, great staff here. I don't sing those praises only here, I was just doing that yesterday at my daughter's softball game, a new softball team, I met one of the new parents and he happened to be a firefighter spacing out on where, but somewhere nearby. And we were talking about how I work the library and I was like, you know, we just love the fact that we are like a stone's throw from both the Police Department and the Fire Department. So every time I've ever called 911, which hasn't happened in a while, but you never know what's going to happen, I've had both of them, those departments there long before whatever ambulance or whatever need is. So it's fantastic. I will also just give a shout out to Scott from DPW. We are super thankful for all the work that he does. That building is looking great and it's largely due to him and all the work we get to partner with, with Teresa. But you're all aware of how great your people are, so. Couple of things to share, it's been a continued time of change for the library. I would say the last two-ish years between opening a new building two and a half years ago, getting out of COVID, and then the really last year is about change within the branch because our staff is maybe 75% different than it was a year and a half, two years ago. So if you walk in there, for those of you who are regular users, you've probably noticed a lot of new faces. We had a lot of retirements, a lot of people that had been there for 20, 30 years, were ready to be done. And then, you know, it's the job market where there's all sorts of opportunities. So we have a very young, very different staff, which is exciting because it's a lot of people that are new to working in the library and excited to be there and really young and have lots of vibrant and fun ideas, which has been great. One of the things that I always like to share is just some of the services that people in the community are really excited about. And two that struck me, the number one is programming. You're all aware that we, we do lots of programming from Storytime to teen programming. We had a swordsman, I don't know, I can't remember if it was Pirate Swords or which one we did at the branch this summer, but all sorts of fun stuff. This summer though, in particular, it has just gone through the roof, particularly at our branch. We've always been very popular and those numbers have been increasing all year. This summer in particular, we saw over 10,000 attendees at programs just in June and July alone, which was an increase of, last year we had about 3,900. So it was a big summer. If, for those of you who are across the parking lot, you probably saw the parking lot was full most of the time. And part of that's due to the cool programs and things we've had. I think a big part of that is due to partnering with Teresa because we try to really do things on Tuesdays when it's already a great time and it makes for a busy, a busy, fun time, although a full parking lot. I would say the other service I think lately is most utilized at the branch is just space. People are excited just to be in the space. Whether that's our new Wonder Nook space, I know I've talked for years as it was getting ready, our new children's play space that has been complete and maybe five, five months ago now, three months ago, something like that. So if you haven't seen it yet, come look at it. And the other big part of that space is our programming, or not our program, that's popular too, but our private study rooms. I think the, the building plan and everybody on that was very prescient of the need for just a quiet space for work. And so we, we had two private study rooms for the expansion. We've got, I think nine or 10 now, plus the, the conference room. And on any given day, you can walk around that building and most of the day, they're about 80 to 90% full. It's like the perfect amount, you can always find one if somebody wants a space, but they're almost always like mostly full. So it's been, it's been a good year. I want to end with just a couple of comments from patrons and a little story. We always take comments, whether they're the Facebook comments on our programs or on the surveys we do periodically, once a month through, some of that data gathering that Randy was talking about. But just a couple of days ago, on one of those surveys, we had a patron write, write in just saying, I have a four-year-old I take with me to visit the library each week. She loves it, the play space, the books, the friendly staff and fellow readers all contribute. It's a place of learning that my kid asks to go to as often as she asks to go to the playground. Another person wrote in on our craft sale, which is one of those things we offer for the kids and teens alongside of the farmer's market mornings. Thank you for putting on this event, so wonderful to see so many young entrepreneurs out there today. My kids had a blast getting ready for their sale, so many lessons learned about supplies, expenses, and just overall salesmanship. And then finally, the best story that my staff had for me to pass on today, they told me that just a couple of months ago, we had a regular that was coming to the library, she was using the computers in the library to fill out job applications. And she had been retired for a while, was a little hesitant, discouraged, looking for work, and she worked with some staff members to fill out an application for a local fast food restaurant and she was hired just later that week. Couldn't come in, she came in, couldn't express how appreciative she was of staff, including bringing gift cards and free combo meals and things to, to the staff members that helped her. So the library means a lot to a lot of people and we appreciate the partnership to keep up that building and keep us doing the work that we do. So with that, I think the three of us would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Well, we consider ourselves very fortunate that you are here. And Mr. Dykes also is our representative. Thank you very much. How many years have you been in Granville?
I've been at KDL about 15 years. I was the teen person for four or five years. I went off for a short jaunt, managing Lowell for maybe a year, and then I've been back for eight-ish years.
So eight years. I, I remember sitting at, in your job interview, you hit it out of the ballpark.
Oh, thank you.
At that time, and you've been doing so ever since, so thank you. We really appreciate it.
I remember that interview and I remember maybe the week after I hired you saying, I think it's time to expand the library, you ready to go? And I think I said, yeah, can you give me like two months?
Could you give us six years? But we, we all, we got there, so.
We did, so.
Questions for Josh or anybody else? Comments? Yeah, activity's just gone crazy this year in a really good way. Yeah. Tomorrow morning?
Yeah, tomorrow morning. Thank you all.
Anybody else here tonight like to make public comment? Just come on up to the podium and give us your name and address and tell us what you're thinking about, we'll see. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Matheson and I live 3325 Tomahawk Drive in Granville. And I wanted to bring this up. I don't know if it's anything that's been addressed yet or not, but several weeks ago, my next-door neighbor's kid hit somebody and killed them, right at the, right near Wilson and Prairie, in a wheelchair without a flag. She did not see him. This is something that has happened many times to me and I'm sure to many other people. Just the other day, I was driving down Wilson and had I not seen this guy in front of the stop traffic, I could have hit him. They have no flags, no way you can see them, and I think that it should be imperative that they have some sort of a flag, that there should be a rule that if they're going to go scooting around, they can't help it, that's the only way they can get around. But we have to be able to see them because people of course should be driving carefully and keeping an eye out. But it, it really is quite impossible to see some of these people. I've lived in Granville for a long time and I've driven around Granville for a long time and thank God I've never hit anybody. Well, not really, but, but I know that there are a lot of older people, a lot of mentally challenged folks that zoom around in those little wheelchairs. And I know that there's a marked crossing right by the park here. I don't know if, what the, what it was that, that started that up. I don't know why, why that was started or why that was put there. It's a good place for people to cross if they use it properly, but nonetheless, people cross all over the street, all over Wilson. And these folks, there's no way you can see them. There is no way that you can see them, they go scooting along, there's no flag, no lights, nothing. And I don't want to see another person killed or hurt and I don't want to have to look out for them and God forbid, I don't want to be the person that hits them. I think that that's something that is very inexpensive and I think that the city should be responsible for that as far as, as far as looking out for its citizens. These folks have to get around and they are going to get around and we don't want them to have to worry or to, or worse, or die. And I just, I don't know if there's any kind of a policy in place right now where it's recommended that they have these flags, big fluorescent flags. I know that even colorblind people can see fluorescent flags. So I think that it's, it should be imperative that they have that because some, it's just another problem that's going to come up and it's just going to be a matter of time before somebody else is hit or killed.
Appreciate your comments. I notice our, I see our Deputy Chief Feldman taking notes as you're speaking, so appreciate those comments and the suggestion. Sure there'll be some investigation or research or.
Okay.
Into that. Also, a kind of a related item, tonight, under our bill's approval, we are going to be looking at a traffic study for that particular intersection, but what you're talking about is even broader than that. It's everywhere, so appreciate the comments.
Yeah, I did see that on the, on the agenda and I thought that might have something to do with that. But, but I just feel, my heart goes out to this girl who hit the guy, she's just ruined completely. And, and it's, and from what I know, it's probably still under investigation, but from what I know, it was not any fault of her own. She wasn't on the phone, she wasn't speeding, she wasn't, you know, she was just driving, just turning and, and didn't see the guy and hit him and that was the end of it. So I don't want to see that happen again.
Your, your point is well taken. Appreciate your comment. Thank you very much, Carolyn. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Last chance? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. We've got a big consent agenda, a long one with a lot of purchases. All the purchases have a backup memo and we have the department heads, so if there's any questions, you can feel free to ask them, of course. any questions, you can feel free to ask them, of course. So we've got the, the police and treasures July reports, and we also have the park and rec board June report, as well as the recent planning commission minutes. We also have the appointment to delegates to the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting this year, and that will be, I think, in September, October, it's in Traverse City, I do remember that. So we'll need to be appointing two people to that, a delegate and alternate. Then we also have miscellaneous purchase orders, security fencing around the generators at the fire department, police department, the exhaust removal system at the fire department, which Chief has written a memo on that. Also, fire department, new driveways, which is a pretty big project, and as well as a motor pool, a backhoe. And for park and recreation, the barn demolition at Millrais Park, as much as we love the barn, I think it's kind of a cool structure, but maybe, yeah, definitely has to go. So we've got a bit on that. And then also sealing some streets. So before we open it up for questions or discussing any particular items, approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city because there are a number of purchases there. Is there a motion to approve?
You want to insert the name to the question?
Yeah, for the delegates to the annual meeting.
I know I had mentioned already to city manager that I, I'm not available to attend as, as a backup. I know that's typically what we've done in the past, so I'm just throwing that out there that I'm unable to attend this year.
And let's see, I, I forget what the date of that was.
October eighteen to twenty.
October eighteen. I can be there. Josh, are you planning on going, or Randy, who's?
I am, but I'm on the board. So I'll, I'll be at the annual meeting anyway. I can't be a delegate and a board member.
Oh, okay.
But I probably won't be there.
All right. I'm, I'm happy to be a delegate or alternate, or if somebody else would like to do, and anybody going to Traverse City in October.
I'm going, I'm planning on going, but are you going?
No, I'm not.
Don't know about Paul. Sounds like Randy's the alternate.
Okay. Right, so happy to do it, be the delegate and Randy alternate. So that would be inserted into that. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
Subpo.
Or, anything anybody wants to talk about or questions? We've got all the department heads have their memos, but maybe some questions or comments? Okay, if not, motion and support. Brittany, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gellerwels?
Yes.
Mariga?
Yes.
Nordhuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Muth?
Yes.
Got our city managers' report, couple items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's two items. The first one is the Metro Act right-of-way permit extension for AT&amp;T. This would allow AT&amp;T to continue to use the public right-of-ways for their business purposes. The current permit is expiring at the end of this current calendar year and will be extended for five more years, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Do we really have any discretion in that?
Not really. It's, the state took over administration of that a number of years ago and, under the Metro Act, and so we just are confirming that their extension is okay with local government.
Questions, comments?
Just out of curiosity, is this only for telephone service? Like, I mean, like, do we sign all these for Comcast and for, you know, other third-party? I, do we?
This is all service that AT&amp;T provides.
Just AT&amp;T?
It would be, it would be phones, video, and all that. They also have a number of subsidiaries that they own that would be used, could be used the right-of-way under this permit. But yes, all users of the right-of-way have to go through this permitting process through the state.
Is there a motion to approve signing the Metro Act right-of-way permit extension in favor of AT&amp;T?
Subpo.
Motion?
Support.
Any other comments? Brittany, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gellerwels?
Yes.
Mariga?
Yes.
Nordhuk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Muth?
Yes.
The second item this evening under the manager's report is the authorization to hire Progressive AE Incorporated. They're a transportation engineering firm that would complete a traffic study for the Wilson Avenue Prairie Street intersection and any other intersections nearby that would contribute to how traffic flows through the intersection. This is in response to the fatality that was mentioned earlier this evening, but in public comment. Shortly after the event, I asked the city's engineer, Morn Burjink, to undertake an analysis of the intersection to identify any ways that we could improve pedestrian safety in the intersection, or if anything is warranted, to change signalization or modify the traffic flow through the intersection. The first step to accomplishing that analysis is to have Progressive AE complete a baseline traffic study, and we are asking for council's authorization to hire them at a cost not to exceed six thousand two hundred dollars.
Questions for Dennis about the contract with Progressive AE?
Yeah, I'm just assuming that we authorize that. I'm just curious on the timeline for when that might occur, sometime in the next few weeks, it sounds like, looking at the.
With, with authorization this evening, we'll have a kickoff meeting with Progressive AE, and then they'll lay out their timeline. But yes, it usually takes about a month for them to complete all the data collection.
Okay. I think that'll be good because it'll be after school starts, and I know it's a really busy intersection with the crossing guard there and with lots of kids and their parents walking to school and, you know, morning commute traffic and so forth. So that traffic study would be from like the beginning of the day till like the end of the day, it looks like, seven AM to eight PM or something, I think I saw.
Yeah, I think in their, their proposal, they're, they've identified that the windows of data collection would be during the morning and evening rush hours. We can also ensure that the opening of school overlaps with their data collection. If it's not already included, we'll have to do that.
I think that would be good because I think that's where some of the comments have come from is with kids crossing, and there was a crossing guard that was also injured there a couple of years ago. So that would be good. Probably the busiest time of the year that you could study traffic there.
Any other questions for Dennis? Well, is there a motion to approve entering into a contract for sixty-two hundred dollars for the traffic analysis that Dennis has described?
Subpo.
Support. Any other comments? Okay, Brittany, would you call the role, please?
Gellerwels?
Yes.
Mariga?
Yes.
Nordhuk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
And Mayor Muth?
Yes.
Dennis, anything else?
I'd just like to remind you, because you received information about the Millrais Park revised plan in the packet for the agenda, and then I sent it to you digitally this morning so you could read it easier. I have planned to place that on the agenda in two weeks so that the council can confirm that that plan is okay. If you have any questions during the two weeks in between, please feel free to reach out to me or Charlie to talk about the revisions that have been suggested in the plan. That's it, thank you.
Great. Okay, councilmember comments. Jared, let's start with, with you.
Well, I wasn't around this weekend, but I've heard fantastic things about the Vintage Festival as always, and thanks to all the departments that are here that help support that. Charlie, I know you guys are very, very busy. Police and Fire are always there as well, supporting and keeping everybody safe. And kudos to Teresa for another not, you know, home run again, and we, I think we avoided some of the weather that was looming as well. So I know she takes that extremely personal, the weather, but it was, it sounds like a great event. That's it for me.
Thanks, Josh, for the presentation. And send the word back to the higher-ups. I really appreciate the reports we get regularly and that annual report this month. It'll take me a few months just to read it all and comprehend it, but it's great to go back to and just, it's so cool to see how many kids and families and communities are being served by the library, so thank you much. And then Chief Anglom, is this, is this from the police department, this summary of, of the parade?
Combined police department, that's a summary of our after-action report.
Okay.
And we have a major incident, and we go through and do an after-action report. Some of it is public safety sensitive, but that's the agenda that directly related to the parade.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it.
Justin?
All right, I know that they've left, but I just want to once again acknowledge the Stanberries and the Granville Police Department. I know as someone whose family personally benefited from that outreach program at Helen DeVos this year, it's just, you cannot overstate the joy that that brings to people who are in the hospital. So thank you to our police department, thank you to them. It's so wonderful, one of the wonderful things we have going here, and that's all I have.
Josh?
Yeah, I was going to echo some of the same things that were already said. It happens when you start on the other end of the table here, you get the second to last word, I guess, right? I guess, so just wanted to say again, thanks to the Stanberries and the police department. I know Granville takes the lead kind of on some of those events, and obviously we're setting the, setting the tone for other departments, setting examples, so it's just great to hear that, you know, from, from the gentlemen that were here, and, you know, we know that we have an awesome police department and appreciate all the events that you guys have been doing with their support as well, so. And then just wanted to mention again, you know, the park projects still are underway, making good progress. The, I believe the playground at Wedgewood is in, and now we need to do surface, right?
Hard surface.
Hard surface.
Start putting mulch in on Wednesday.
Okay, so that's coming along.
Public works to happen.
Oh, okay, so that'll be quick then. People have been asking, looking forward to using the new playground. If you haven't had a chance to swing by there, it looks really good, all new equipment, some different stuff than what they've had there before. And then pickleball courts are starting next week for the construction.
It's starting late this week. I see there's an extra year and a better logo on it already. I'm waiting for the consumers to disconnect the public. Possibly, yes, by next Monday, it will be starting, if not later this week.
All right, so that would be great, too, and I know work's continuing over at Heritage too, right, with the?
Heritage, the C-wall and the dock. The C-wall is all completed or in. The next step will be to cut it up to a certain height if need to, then they'll put the cap on it, and then they'll extend it, start putting the top out. So it's coming along quite nicely.
And there's new bathrooms at Little League.
Bathrooms at, at Little League. We're waiting for the fixtures to get, to put in there, depending on the building's also getting recited, so it's going to be a nice project.
So appreciate Charlie and the Public Works Department and all the work that they've done with that, but it's just a really exciting summer for a lot of great parks projects, a lot of investment that we've all been discussing. You know, the community's very excited about seeing new amenities, you know, a little impatient at times, waiting while the construction's going on, and kind of asking questions about, you know, what's going on and curiosity and that sort of thing. But, you know, it's all going to be coming together here in the next few weeks, it sounds like, and should be really, really good, so lots to be proud of. So make sure you take, take a tour around the parks when you get a chance to, to check it out. It's those arper dollars at work that we, you know, spent a lot of time talking and considering how we wanted to, you know, make sure the community benefits from that, so. All right, that's it.
Thank you. You guys pretty much summed it up, but just for the ending here, just, we really do have a lot to be thankful for and proud of here in Granville, so it's a great community.
Great, yeah. Vintage Fest was a lot of fun, I mean, busy and just a lot of different things for people to enjoy. I mean, any, no matter your age, you can come here and find some fun, some fun things to do. So also last week, Chief was at, along with an officer at National Night Off, Night Out, the kickoff. Just one other comment I wanted to make, and, and that is, next time we have a strategic planning meeting, one thing I'd like to, or, or just before that, I guess, and that's the issue of e-bikes. They're pretty popular, and I don't know if we have an ordinance regarding e-bikes on, on sidewalks or bike paths, and, because some e-bikes are not exactly a bike, they're more like a motorcycle. I mean, there's different classes of them, so Carolyn actually gave me an article that was very interesting that I'll, I'll share if I can on, on that. So just kind of start thinking about that a little bit. I, I was on an e-bike for the first time, and it was pretty fun, so.
Were you on the sidewalk?
No, well, I was on the street, but not around here. I was, I was on.
Just on either of our streets.
Yeah, right. Okay.